Welcome to our January 15th, 8 o'clock briefing. Invitational be Mr. Acock, followed by the pledge by Mr. Mayo. And then we'll go on through the approval amendments. The next one we've got a couple is discussion adjustment agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one addition that we would like to add. It is a resolution stating and proclaiming January 26th as Sudan Shriners Day in Wayne County. And we would like to do that under presentations if we could make a photo op for the Shriners.
Okay.
And that's all we have as far as the walk.
Okay. Does any commissioner have anything to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mayo.
I would like to ask that under consent agenda, under consent agenda, item nine, the motion to award RFQ for architectural services for the 210 Dixie Trail, I'd like to ask that that be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay.
For further discussion.
Later date?
This morning.
All right, Ms. Bowen, you got it there?
You're going to do business, couldn't make it number three.
All right, get back to the special presentations. Mr. Hanecut, have you got through those?
Yes, sir. We do have a plaque and we would like to recognize our former chairman, who's now our vice chairman, William H. Payton, for his services chairman for the last two years. So we do have recognition for that. Number two, then we have our employee service pins. And we would ask that the commissioner stand in front for that. And then we have a motion to approve service to retired Lieutenant Weapon, to retired Lieutenant Carter Hicks, and a retirement plaque to Lieutenant Hicks. And then we'll have Paula Edwards here to discuss the senior gains, the state senior gains.
That's back at number two. You cleared out one up. Number two.
Yes, sir. Oh, that's right. We're going to, on service pins one through five, we will hand out and then we would ask that all of our employees stay. And then at the end, we'll get a picture with the board of commissioners.
To simplify, we're going to sit up here while the presentations of pins are going on, employees going to line up. That enable Public Affairs get a group shot of all of the recipients.
Right. And I apologize, I forgot that change.
That's fine. Then at 9:05, public comments time. That'll be followed by recessed board of commissioners to convene the Wayne County Board of Justice meeting for the public comments on the special use permit for Summit Solar LLC solar energy facility at 245 Everett Road, Mount Olive. And then we'll adjourn the Wayne County Board of Justice meeting and reconvene the board of commissioners meeting. Then we have a performance committee report, Ms.?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go with the consent agenda, Mr. Hanecut.
Number one is your application for disabled veterans exclusions and everything looks good on that, at least from SaaS perspective. Then number two is our budget amendments, and I will turn that over to Ms. Payton.
Your first amendment to Page 32, net port, requesting to appropriate fund balance in the amount of $39,557.50. And this is to fund a change order number two for the corporate area expansion grant.
Were those engineering fees?
I don't believe so. It was from the addition of potable water service lines for the hangar, for the new For Public Affairs, we're requesting to reallocate $10,000 from capital outlay to advertising. They had significant savings on a project and are requesting to reallocate that to marketing. Pages 34 and 35 are for, you see two of them there, but they are for our Wayne County EMS transport funds. These are for a total of $23,235 to be reallocated from capital outlay to uniforms. And this is to purchase uniforms with the new logo and branding on it. So I'm now on page 36, number 247 for the sheriff's office, requesting to anticipate $40.76 for controlled substance tax receipts. For the hospitalization fund, we are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $800. This is for a lunch and learn program for employees. They will be supporting that with fees from the employees to cover the cost. For the county capital reserve sales tax fund, 113, this is to make a correction for the September sales tax distribution that is required to be distributed to their schools.
Is that an increase in the funds or a decrease?
Yes, sir. And it's actually a prior year correction. So we called it during the audit of that, so we're just trying to make that adjustment, make sure we true up that fund. For WCDAs, we are requesting to anticipate $98,317.23. This is additional funds for the rural center building reuse grant with Stormburg Foods, but this part of it does not require county match. So that's basically putting us as a pass through. And that is all I have for you today.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Number three is motion to approve the community services block, community anti-poverty plan for Wayne County group for wages. Again, this is a pass through grant that we approve on an annual basis. If there's any questions. Motion, or consent item number four, is to approve resolution 2019-2, resolution adopting the 25th amendment to the pay and class plan for Wayne County. If there's any questions. And then number five, motion to approve amendment to the FMLA policy as presented by Human Resources Director, Geraldine Lee. And I will have Geraldine come and do number five and number six.
Please.
Yeah. Look, we're ready for you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good morning. I am, well, requesting two changes. One is just an amendment to the FMLA policy. And I think that in order, just to make sure that it is clarified to our employees, on the second page in your, in your book, the third to the last paragraph, it is important to note that during the period of, and that should be unpaid FMLA leave, no employee is to be eligible to earn either vacation and/or sick time until the employee has actively resumed his or her full-time or regular part-time work status. So it's pretty simple in the explanation. If they are not getting paid, then they should not be earning vacation time or sick leave time. And on the second memo I've got on sick leave sharing, and this is a result of a situation that we had come up last month regarding an employee who wanted just to, who had already left the employment of Wayne County and wanted to give his sick time to an employee. The time actually belongs to the county. If an employee leaves, then that time does remain on the books for a period of one year in case they should either come back or in case they should go to another municipality or county or a state agency. And if that agency allows them to transfer in that time, we will be happy to do so. But I think we need to add an amendment to the personnel policy indicating that an employee cannot just arbitrarily give away their time to someone just because they want to give away their time. Any questions on either of those?
What page is that on?
That is on page two of the memorandum that I submitted, the second from the last paragraph.
55, oh, 52 to the 57. Actually, this would be 55 to 57.
Okay.
Any questions on those?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, because she's up here and not about these two items, there's a, in my head, there's a related issue on this, on our consent agenda for today. Within the document, with great care, you have listed about the pay scales and the list of our employees and the rank of pay and so forth and so on. All right, just want to show you, say where I was heading. And then I look at the back of the book and I see our new employees. And I rise verbally to say something about this. With great admiration, I look at the fact that we have some good salary ranges in here. But I also recognize there are some deplorable starting salaries in here. I resent the fact that we would start someone at $7.33 an hour. That's not a living wage. I'd rather work for free and have someone to give me what I needed, or maybe let me live out in a hut in the back someplace, because this is borderline, this is borderline in my mind, a tragedy. I don't quite know what you can, how much gas you can get in a loaf of bread and all that at $7.33 an hour. I know this may sound shocking to someone, but we need to be talking about closer to $10 an hour. It's an insult to ask someone to work $7.33 an hour. I don't remember the last time I worked for that, but I would resent it if I hadn't worked for that today. Eating inside out of a donut. If that was my job, I'd hate to get paid $7.33 an hour to eat the inside out of a donut. That's just how passionate I feel. But I'm sorry, ma'am, I just, I looked over this last night, and I'm not Vernon Sanders, but that living wage thing. Walmart. And I got a lot of passion for big corporation, but they raise theirs. I was glad to see that, because a lot of folk are working in those jobs who need work and may not have those extraordinary skills, a great resume that they'll ever earn $100,000. But we pay good money in this, in this county for some positions, and it's an insult in my mind, ask someone to work for that. I just say that to my colleagues here. And I just, thank you, ma'am. I won't preach to more about it, but we just needed that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I don't want to get in a discussion about this, but it's $8.33 an hour, and this is for a part-time position at the container sites. Are we pretty much in line with other counties on that or?
We are. And I will say that the part-time salaries that you're looking, or the salary that you're looking at is reflective of part-time positions. We did go back and look at our lowest full-time positions salaries two years ago before Wood left, and we did increase them at that time. Now, at your discretion, it may be time to review those positions again, but the full-time positions have been increased. That is a part-time position that you're looking at.
Paul, I was trying to make, ma'am, I pay people $8 an hour to help me write leads. And I don't like for us to get into comparing ourselves with what other counties are able to get away with, or other states, other entities. I'm talking about us. There are some things going on around this nation that I would be real upset if they ever made their way to Wayne County, and this is one of them.
And at your discretion, I'll be glad to review those. Just give me the, go ahead, tell me which ones you want me to review, and I'll be happy to do it. Any questions on the FMLA or the sick leave sharing?
And if we need to, you know, we do have our goal setting approved coming up. This needs to be an item for discussion. We can do that at that time if you'd like, please. Thank you, Geraldine. Number seven that we have is a motion to approve support for the 2019-20 legislative goal package from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Really, this has already been approved last week. That's what I attended on behalf of the chairman last Thursday and Friday. One thing they did not approve was the expansion of Medicaid. So that was not a goal that was set by the Association of County Commissioners. One goal that was passed, and I want to thank the chairman for and our DSS director, Tammy Schrinker, for their help, is we had a goal passed that we were against the MOUs that the state requires local governments to sign with respect to the DSS oversight. Because as you know, we're signing, we had to sign a MOU for standards that we know we're not going to meet. And we had to sign a MOU and reporting back to the state that we may have to add on additional people just to keep up with the reporting requirements. So what we've asked, that part of our legislative goals, and again, working with the chairman and Tammy, that we got approved last week, was the association has taken that as a priority to try to get that revised, so it really doesn't put the counties behind the eight ball in being responsible for things that some that they can't control. Because again, there's things in that MOU that we know we're not going to meet. So, but I do want to thank Tammy and Andrew and Carol, and so we kind of did a yeoman's job in a couple hours last week. So I do want to thank them for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with leaving that on the consent agenda with the agreement that you would change in our minutes what the actual goals were that were approved.
We will. Yes, sir. This was just a general.
Okay. I just don't want it on record that basically we approved.
You're supporting Medicaid.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of sanitary sewer merger regionalization feasibility study. Charles Archer is here with Fries and Nichols. One of the things that the board asked during the agenda meeting was to go ahead and do the presentation during the agenda process. Charles is here, and as the board remembers, we received a grant from the state to look at really the consolidation, if it was feasible, between Fremont and Goldsboro and also Eureka, and the issues that are involved in that. We received a $50,000 grant. The county was named as the grantor, so the county was responsible for the grant administration. We've been working with Fries and Nichols for about a year now on this project. I really want to thank Charles and his group, especially for their coordination with Fremont and Eureka and the information that they brought together. So we've decided to go ahead and have Charles do that presentation here during the agenda meeting. So, Charles?
Good morning, everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As manager said, I'm Charles Archer with Fries and Nichols. We appreciate the opportunity to work with Wayne County. It's been a pleasure working with your staff, also with the towns of Fremont and Eureka, their staff, and their consulting engineers as well. They were all very helpful in the process of us conducting this feasibility study on behalf of the county. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I'll try to move through this quickly. I know you've got a long day in front of you. But as the manager said, this was an effort to, to look at a high-level analysis of some of the challenges of sewer, particularly in Eureka and Fremont. And we'll get into the details of what the issues are there here in just a moment. As the manager said, the grant was for $50,000, so it only provided funding for a limited scope of work. And we looked at two options, two regionalization options. One being the consolidation of Eureka and Fremont into one sewer system. Right now, they're two separate standalone sewer systems operated by each of those towns. The second option was to look at combining Eureka, Fremont with the town of, with the city of Goldsboro's sewer system. Look at those two options from an engineering perspective as well as a financial perspective. On our team are Raph Tellis, financial consultants. They specialize in doing utility rate studies and strategic planning and analysis. And so they did that part of it. We did the engineering part of it. And the issues are primarily what was driving this grant was, was called INI, inflow and infiltration, essentially rainwater getting into the sewer system. Eureka has a huge challenge here. Fremont has a challenge, and they're, they're making some headway. I would say that every sewer system has INI. It's just a matter of how much. All across the nation and across North Carolina, we've got aging infrastructure. And as those pipes get older, the equipment gets older, you have more and more, essentially rainwater getting into your sewer systems, raises the cost. You're treating rainwater, not sewage, and wet weather events. And that's the problem here with Eureka and Fremont. It's also an issue of economy at scale, particularly in Eureka, having such a small population being served by the sewer system. They only have 110 sewer customers. So it's awfully hard to spread the cost of doing that across 110 paying customers. So that's some of the things that we looked at, well, the options we looked at with this. So one of the first things we did was try to get an understanding of how these systems operate. We looked at Eureka system, we looked at Fremont system, and Goldsboro's system to a lesser extent, to get an understanding of how they operate. And the way they operate today is that Eureka collects their wastewater from their customers, and they pump it to Fremont. Fremont either treats it with their treatment system there, but during wet weather, and it's been wet weather for about a year now, they have to pump to Goldsboro to do the treatment. And so there's a forced main pump station that pumps the wastewater to Goldsboro, Goldsboro system. The goal here is to try to reduce that INI, to reduce the operating cost, and also reduce the burden on the rate paying customers. So the primary components of our study was to look at the financial issues related to the systems for Eureka and Fremont, to do an analysis of how their systems operate. We also did population and flow projections, looking at for the next 10 years. We reviewed a capital improvements program for both of those systems over this 10-year planning period. So to start with Fremont, what we found is that Fremont's population is pretty much flat. We don't see it changing a whole lot in the next 10 years. They are making some good headway in improving their inflow and infiltration, their INI. They've got several capital projects underway. They've been successful in getting some grant funding to help with their system. They've got improvements being made at their lagoon and spray field treatment process, improvements being made at the Hill and Dale pump station to make that more efficient. And they're doing a lot of rehab for their sewer lines to reduce that INI. And they're also trying to improve their controls of how they manage their pump stations. And again, they're collecting their water, wastewater and treating it, as well as Eureka's wastewater. When it's extreme wet weather, they have to pump some of that to Goldsboro to be treated. What we found in Eureka is a little bit different story. They have a declining population, declining customer base. As I said a moment ago, they have 110 customers on their sewer system. They have significant INI. You'll see that typically, at this analysis, we assumed the average customer used 3,000 gallons of water a month. That customer, if they're using 3,000 gallons a month in wet weather, Eureka's pumping 15,000 gallons per customer. The INI is five times the rate of the amount of water they're selling. Gives you an idea of the condition of that sewer system. So that's not very efficient, and it makes their rates very high, and it's a burden on the rate payers there. They are working towards putting in a whole, complete new system in the town, but unfortunately, it's very expensive, and it's a small population to spread it across. Again, they pump all their wastewater over to Fremont for treatment. We looked at the CIP for both Fremont and Eureka. And Fremont, as I mentioned, they're doing a lot of sewer rehab underway. In the future, they hope to extend sewer to the interchange at I-795. They have another project to convert the chlorine treatment to sodium hypochlorite. And they have a total of about $1.86 million worth of capital projects scheduled in the next 10 years. And the assumption to do this is all that will be grant-funded capital projects, not something that they would have to borrow money for or put on the back of the rate payers. Again, Eureka's a little bit different story. They have that one CIP project replacing their entire collection system. At the time, we were working on the study back in the fall. That was about a $2.27 million project, but only 62% of that's going to be funded by grant, and the remaining 38% is going to have to be a loan that the rate payers of Eureka would have to pay for. So that's an adding debt load to Eureka sewer system of about, over $600,000. And that's, that's, that's the big issue here, is the amount of debt that Eureka's having to carry and spread over 110 customers. As I mentioned earlier, both towns are really working hard to reduce INI. It's just difficult when you don't have that economy of scale like some of the larger cities do. And that was the purpose of this study, to look at what opportunities there may be through consolidation of these systems, to reduce the cost of treatment, electricity, all those operating costs that go into treating wastewater for our citizens. So getting on the financial side, Raph Tellis, our teaming member, they did a high-level study. They had to make a lot of assumptions. Again, there wasn't a lot of funding to do a very detailed analysis at, at this level of, of the project. So they made a lot of assumptions, especially with regard to Eureka system. But they focused on two areas. One is customer affordability. EPA has standards that they like to see for, for utility systems across the country about how much are your utility bills? How much is your water and sewer bill as a percentage of medium household income? And you're going to see in a moment that Eureka exceeds what EPA believes is reasonable there. And the other side of the financial analysis is what were, over the next 10 years, if these, under these scenarios of consolidating these sewer systems, what rate adjustments were going to be needed by the towns over this 10-year period that would be passed along to those customers that in fact affects that percentage of medium household income? So the methodology was to create this 10-year forecast and to look at three options. As there are today, the status quo, standalone, Eureka, Fremont, by themselves, how they're operating today, or combine together where Fremont and Eureka becomes one system operated by the town of Fremont. And the third option would be, both of those systems would be consolidated with the city of Goldsboro, and that the Goldsboro would take over the collection treatment of the wastewater for those. So there are the three scenarios. The assumptions that were made. The assumptions that were made in the financial analysis was that the number of customers would remain constant, not go down, affecting that economy of scale. The other, next assumption is that 100% of Fremont's capital budget for the next 10 years for their sewer system would be grant-funded, so it would not be additional loans taken out for that. We did assume that 62% of CIP for Eureka, that replacement of their system would be a grant, and the remaining 38% would be a loan that would be added to their rate payers. And also that these system improvements would reduce the INI, reduce the operating cost of the cost of having treatments. Think about it. If you're paying the, that customer in Eureka that's buying 3,000 gallons of water but sending 15,000 gallons of water to Fremont, they're paying to have 15,000 gallons of water treatment. We're assuming that that's going to go down from these system improvements, if they work the way they're supposed to. And also the changes in retail versus wholesale rates there. This is the, kind of hard to see it from the screen, but when you look at the three scenarios, you'll see standalone, that's the status quo, where Eureka and Fremont continue to operate independently of one another like they do today. And you can see what the, this is just sewer bill, not water, just sewer. The sewer treatment in Eureka on the standalone is $80 compared to $52 in Fremont compared to $30 in Goldsboro. When you look at the affordability, that percentage of median household income, you see that in red up there, Eureka's at 2.4%. EPA likes to cap that at 2%, so anything less than 2% is good in their view. And that's why, that's why that number is red up there. And you can see that both Fremont and Goldsboro will well below the 2%. Under scenario one, which is Fremont and Eureka combined, being operated by the town of Fremont, that Eureka's sewer bills could drop to about $76 a month. Fremont's would stay the same essentially. Obviously, Goldsboro doesn't have a stake in that, so they would stay the same. And when you look at scenario two, there are ranges here, again, because there are a lot of assumptions made at this high-level analysis. But what you would see in sewer bills in Eureka would drop to the $55 range. They would, in Fremont, they'd drop about $2 or so from the minimum to $50. And Goldsboro would increase a couple dollars from $30 to $31 there. You can see that there would be some improvement through consolidating and letting Goldsboro treat all this. But what this is doing is shifting that response, that this additional cost essentially to the rate payers in the city of Goldsboro. And what we would recommend is that if there is a desire to look at consolidating these systems, that a more detailed analysis needs to be conducted. This is done at a very high level, having to make a lot of assumptions. And most likely, the city of Goldsboro is going to want to do their own independent analysis to see if this makes sense for them as well. But, so that's the, that's the long and short of it. So, and that's essentially what our conclusion is, that there is cost savings opportunities to merge these systems, but without more detailed analysis and further research, it wouldn't make sense to do it at this point in time until we know what all the implications may be, and doing that, and how to do it. So with that, I'm happy to try to answer any of your questions.
If I can say, this is a non-binary study. Again, we were requested to do it. I think the state was looking at it, that they were paying a lot of grant funding to Eureka and a lot of grant funding to Fremont to help capital needs for the system. And if there were other options other than grant, if it could stand on its own, without solely grant funding for capital, they wanted to see if there were options. So again, we've met the requirements of the state and of commerce by doing this study. So we, they really did want to look at it from that high-level look to see if there was feasibility. I think there's been some conversation with Fremont. I think they're very adamant at this point that they still want to keep their system. But again, I think they are tired of paying five times the rate for, you know, having all the INI issues from Eureka. So it's a, it's a very convoluted situation we have with sewer, because if they go out of business, you know, if Eureka goes out of business, what do you do with 110 customers? Somebody's going to have to take responsibility of it one way or the other.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't really know where to start. I mean, I've been on this board right at six years. We've been fighting this battle. We've already been told all of this several times, all with grant money. Grant money is tax dollars. We spent, there's been enough grant money spent on studies to fix the sewer system. I mean, we're beating a dead horse. And no disrespect to you, sir, but seriously, I don't have the answer now. I don't have the answer. But, but, you know, we can keep doing grants, or we can keep doing studies, but that's not fixing the problem. And like I say, I don't know how to fix the problem. But, but, I mean, this is getting to be ridiculous, spending tax dollars, and that's what grant money is, on something to tell us what we already know.
And I think what they wanted to do was to have it updated before they started spending additional large dollars on capital. They just wanted to update the financial figures.
To update it, all you've got to do is look and see how much is ringing.
Yes. That's very true.
May I?
I have to applaud Fremont, because they have made major strides. These municipalities are in my district, and I've seen what the county, along with Fremont and Eureka, their progress has been made. But I think the bottom line is, is that I'm looking at the sewer rates per month for the citizens of Eureka and Fremont. And the complaints that I get is that, why is ours so much more than if we lived in Goldsboro? I think one of the biggest things that's causing our population, and I get calls all the time, I know people in Fremont and Eureka, I grew up with most of them. The rates are so high compared to, especially people on a fixed income. I get these calls all the time. If I didn't have a house in these town limits paid for, I would be moving out. So I think we need to look at, what do we do beyond, even if we consolidate with Goldsboro, what do we do beyond to try to get sewer rates? All municipalities across the state are having the same issues. I understand that. But I think this is one of the areas why this is affecting the growth of the citizens within these municipalities. I think that's why you see no growth, one of the reasons. And number two, I think it does impact economic development in these areas, in these municipalities to a certain degree. But there is progress made. I've been right in the middle of Fremont since I've been a commissioner. The INI has really, but Eureka is still, they're still having major issues with INI. The question is, is what can we do to try to make it affordable? Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
What is the, does the town of Fremont and Eureka, have they expressed any interest in either of the three of these scenarios that you have proposed?
No, sir. We, no one throughout the process of doing the study stated that they were in favor or against any of them. It's really just looking at it, there are a lot of questions and concerns about it.
Yeah.
Typically, when we do this type of work in different places across the state, you know, it's, the municipalities oftentimes like to be able to own and operate their system to control their destiny, to have control of that. But there are a lot of different models across the state too, of how it's done differently too.
Right.
Where you can still have the right policies to grow, but have more efficient systems at the same time. You know, it's about economy of scale is where you can see the savings in systems.
And sewer is always going to be your loss lead. You know, sewer is going to be what drives the cost. And especially as flat as we are with the pump stations that we have to put in, sewer is what drives the cost.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. In my immediate opinion, I feel like countywide, we need to develop a plan that all citizens would have an opportunity to send their sewer for about the same cost per volume. Now, there are things that we provide with tax dollars that any individual could not ever afford by themselves. Sewer raises its head. We, probably none of us in here are capable of having a security force that will guard our own property. But that's why we have an excellent sheriff department, so that when we are asleep, they are standing guard. Folk up there that are having to pay this dollar amount, and then closer to the center of the county, you're paying this amount, it's unfair. If I was one of those citizens living in that far reaches, I'd be at the tax office wanting to get my taxes reduced so that I could use some of that tax money to pay my sewer pumping deal. I know this dances in the direction of an ideal that some may not see, but those folk that lives in the far reaches, and I say that because the further you are from the center of the county, things will tend to be skewed towards how difficult it is to provide that. I just don't feel like we need to be, and Mr. Akon, this has been discussed many times, and I appreciate the fact, you said, if you're living in the center, you'd be thinking about moving out, getting you a little slightly better fee. But those folk can't afford to move anyplace.
That's correct.
And they are paying taxes, and they pay taxes over time. And I'm a person who personally resents the idea that you pay taxes and don't get any return, from your perspective. Now, I'm not saying that county, that broadly, people don't, oh, yeah, everybody's getting treated fair. But it's not treated fair if one person has paid a large part of their income to get the same services that someone else has had them do, and we're all in the same county paying taxes. I think at the same penny rate per hundred dollars, if I made no mistake.
Mr. Akon.
I think we're looking at three scenarios here. The one that has got the city of Goldsboro raising their rate a little bit. We don't want to say hand flu or nothing, that's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. The city of Goldsboro is not going to raise their sewer rates to compensate Fremont and Eureka. That's just not going to happen.
Then, we should be negotiating what we provide countywide so as to offset the fact that someone may not adjust. I'm talking about adjusting countywide. I'm not talking about any one individual doing something, or one municipality doing something. I'm looking at the total package, Mr. Manager. And I know that's not maybe an easy thing to do, but then, progress is not easy.
And if I could say, my, my biggest concern on this is, let's say Eureka goes out of business, and they decide not to run that sewer system anymore.
Don't do it.
Who's going to do it?
Right.
You've got 110 customers up there, you've got 110 homes. What's going to happen?
110 separate tanks?
It probably won't perk.
It won't perk, that's the reason.
Well, that was a total. Yeah, it probably won't perk.
But if I remember correctly, Mr. Manager, back a year or so ago, there was some talk about individual pump stations at each residence. Do you remember that conversation?
Like a grinder pump?
Yes, yes.
I think that's part of what they're looking at now, as far as their overall revision or upgrade of their system. But again, there's still costs and maintenance and upkeep that are...
Yeah. And I know that it was talked about, and Chip, you may remember more about this than I do, but I do know that it was spoken about at one time, but I don't know if an analysis was ever done on a cost basis. But I do know that Eureka is, that land is wet. Most of it won't perk. That's the reason there's a system there. So sort of a kick 22, really.
All right. Mr. Akon, let's move on to number 10 and breeze through new business real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, we have moved number nine to new business, and number 10 is motion to authorize Sergeant Jason Hill of the Wayne County Sheriff's Department to submit the application for the 2019-20 DWI Task Force Grant.
Morning.
Morning.
We're going into our fifth year of the grant. The agreement for the fifth year was that it was to be 100% funded by the county. The grant that I'll be submitting, I'll be submitting for 25%. We have the need, and there's two things. The need is there, and the task force is working. When we started in 2015, our county ranking for alcohol-related fatalities was 13th. We were number 13 out of 100 counties. We are now 25th. So it's working. And the need is there, because we are still charging over 300 drivers with DWI offenses the last three years. And we're three months into this grant year, and we're nearly at 100. So the need is there, and it's working, if that makes sense. We're making more arrests, but we are having less fatalities on the roadways. So with that being said, I don't feel that there will be a problem with an extension for the 25% grant. And basically, like I said this morning, I'm here to ask to be allowed to put in the application for that grant. If and when the grant is approved, it'll be April or May when we get the approval. And I won't be back, but that young man right there, just taking over for me, he'll be back for the resolution and the agreement of the grant.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't disagree that it's working enough. I appreciate everything you guys are doing. How are we going to pay for it?
Well, what we're, we have committed, you know, through the last five years, that this was to be the 100-year, 100% year. So what Jason's looking at is asking for an additional extension that would help fund 25% this year. So the more funding we can get for this, the better, but we have committed to fund it fully the fifth year.
Does the 25% starting July or when?
No, the grant year runs on the federal fiscal year, which is October to September. So that 25% would start next, would be October 1st of 19.
Okay, so we'd be planning into our next budget.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's remember where we're coming from.
Is made.
Maybe it's here in my packet, I don't see it, but what, 25% of what? What's the...
It's salaries.
Okay, okay.
Officer salaries.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The grant, after about the first two years, they won't fund any more equipment or anything like that. It's all salary.
Okay.
Help me out. The 25, we're in our fourth year or our fifth year?
We are currently in the fourth year, which is 50%.
Right.
The fifth year was, is supposed to be, according to the agreement, 100% funded by the county. by the county.
In the fifth year?
Yes, sir.
And this is a question, I'm sure, and Sheriff may want to share his thoughts, but once we get to that fifth year and the sixth year and so forth, is there a plan, you know, Plan B, Plan Three, you know, something down the road that, from a creative standpoint, Sheriff would not have us doing the same thing, which the cost is going to escalate? And I'm just wondering, and I'm good for going, getting us through that fourth and fifth year, because it takes time to formulate anything that's different from what you're doing. I just raise that from a standpoint of, because we do need the long view and down the road, just your thoughts maybe on how we make...
If the program continues to be successful as it has been, we can continue to apply for this percentage each year. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
And I don't see any reason why they would not fund it, as long as we continue to be a progressive unit. And as Sergeant has expressed, we've gone from being 13th in the state now to 25th. My goal is us keep decreasing these fatalities in this county. We are seeing probably an increase now in drug use and other factors that cause you to be influenced while you're driving under influence. But we are battling the opioid crisis and along with alcohol also.
And I guess to kind of put your mind at ease a little bit, there are counties, like Forsyth County, they're, or not Forsyth County, the task force in Forsyth, they are on, I want to say their eighth year, and they've been, after their fourth year, when they went into that fifth year, they got the 25% grant, and they've continued and extended that out. They're still in their eighth year, and there's really no signs of them stopping or being cut off. They're kind of in the same predicament that we are, where they make a lot of DWI arrests and charges each year, and, but they're still decreasing their fatalities. So I like to use them as an example of what we can do in the future.
Well, I'm sorry, one to close it. The reason I bring this up is, I know when we got started, there was discussion about, you know, that's what we would do if we get to that fourth, fifth year, and Sheriff, I was just wanting to delve into the opportunity or possibility of something we may do that might be as good, but be a little bit more costly, because I know where my colleague is going about the budget. That's all. Thank you very much.
Takeoff.
That's kind of what I was going to say. You know, when we implemented this, we knew this day was coming. And they have proven that it works, and yes, it's going to be a tough budget year. But you can't put a dollar figure on life. And if they've cut it from 13th to what you say, 20?
25th.
25th. It's working. The numbers doesn't lie. And, you know, I just don't see how we can stop the program. I mean, we don't, we may not have the money, but we're going to find it somewhere. I'm in favor of moving forward this application.
And the 25% will help, you know, again, we were supposed to be at 100% matching now, so, you know, we'll, if we can pick up the additional 25%, that will help moving forward as well.
And we knew, we knew that it was coming. I mean, you know, we, we knew when we agreed this.
It was a pay me now, pay me later grant.
You know, now, if he had have said that we had dropped to level 12 or something, I wouldn't feel this way. But they're going in the right direction. And like I say, you can't put a dollar figure on a life.
Yes, sir.
All right. So move along to new business real quickly, because we've got about one minute before nine o'clock.
Okay, yes, sir. New business. Ashley Smith will be here to discuss the stream debris removal project, Part Four, and the awarding of the bid to Coastal Plains Cleaning, or Clearing, which is the lowest possible bidder. Number two, we will have a discussion with Mount Olive University about becoming a partner with them on some continuing education. Number three, under that, Commissioner Mayo has asked that we remove the RFQ Award for Architectural Services for the adaptive reuse of the Dixie Trail properties. So that will be under new business. That's number three. And then number four will be Catch a Glimpse video by our public affairs.
All right. Everybody okay? Just take a quick break before we get started.
That's what we got to have.
That's what I'm going to go with.